Hi. I don't have a gavel, so I'll just announce the meeting open. This is the, what do we got, November 14th, 2018 Edina Planning Commission. I appreciate everyone for coming, and nobody's going to be voted off the island tonight. So Ms. Olson, will you read the roster, please?
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Milton.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Berube. Chair Nemirov.
Thank you very much. So tonight, we have an agenda. We have some good, interesting items on the agenda tonight. Has everyone had a chance to review? Any changes? Motion?
Second.
Motion in second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. We've also received minutes in our packet from the October 24th meeting. Are there any comments to those minutes? Commissioner Lee.
Yes, thank you, Chair. First of all, I thought the minutes were very good. Very well done. Okay, I think I was on the last page. Page seven of eight. Second bullet. Commissioner Lee discussed the unique location of this project on France being near residential homes and discussed that there needs to be a process of defining where the extra density should go. Lee stated she believes in the comprehensive plan. And commented that, and here's, I'd like to make that change, additional guidance the planning commission has received thus far from the Greater Southdale Work Group. I'm sorry, I haven't quite got that worked out. The point was, I wanted to make sure that the guidance we have received has not yet been vetted by the public, so we haven't had a public open house to solicit input by the residents.
Ms. Olson, is that something you could work with, or?
Yep, I can make that change. Thank you.
Okay. I might give you some words afterwards. Let me, I'm sorry, I didn't have that prepared for you.
Anything else?
I did have one other.
Okay.
On page six of eight before that, second bullet to the end. Commissioner Strauss stated this was one of the more difficult projects to make a decision on. Strauss also commented that, commented that there's a process to amend the comp plan. It's actually, I think he was referring to a process to update the comp plan.
Thank you.
Is that correct, Commissioner Strauss?
I agree.
Yeah, I think amend sometimes implies we were going to do an amendment. So it's, he was referring to the comprehensive plan update that is currently taking place. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Anyone want to make a motion?
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right. Well, now we move to the fun of the meeting. We're going to the special recognitions and presentations, and we have a very guest, very special guest tonight, City Manager Scott Neal.
I'm on. Yes. Gene, I'm here to talk about meeting minute protocol, so I don't know if this is fun or exciting, but I'll try to make it brief. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about, if you have noticed, about potential changes that you have noticed in your minutes. We've been talking about this with all of our various boards and commissions throughout city government, but paying particular attention to the planning commission because your minutes, because of the subject matter that you take on, your minutes tended to have the most content to them, and we're really creating quite a lot of demand on time from a staff standpoint. So we began to take a look at kind of what was happening with our, with minutes from the planning commission and really how they were being used. And really how they were being used, particularly by planning commission, but also by staff and also by, by public, is they were using, they were being used as really more of a reference point or a jump-off point to find out what, who said what in a meeting, but then taking that as the, as the jump-off point to go to the video, to see exactly who said what to whom and how did they say it. So the minutes from your meetings are important, but make no doubt, when people wanted to know exactly what you said and how you said it, they were really going to the video of the meeting. And because of the way that we store our videos, archive our videos, they're very easy to find, they're very easy to use, and that's how, that's how we as staff use them. We find that's how the public uses them, and that's how our council uses them. I wanted to show you just a bit about this, about the council's policy as it pertains to minutes. Can we, are we taking a look at that? Can we drill down on that? This really, at the heart of, at the heart of this policy from the council's minute policy that was approved in November 19th of 2013, this is the policy itself. It talks about how we're going to take minutes, what's going to be included in the minutes, but really the intent of this policy in the highlighted piece is the policy change is going to be in the manner in which the council meeting minutes are prepared, is to improve the readability of the minutes by making their length shorter and more concise. If you take a look at some of the data that we've pulled together about council minutes and planning commission minutes, and I've included that in the planning, in the planning commission, for the planning commission members at the dais, this is just a look at comparing planning commission. It's not popping up on this screen. That's why I'm just having to look at that. That's okay. There it is. This is just a quick comparison between city council minutes and planning commission minutes in terms of how long a meeting might be and how long minutes might be. It's not an exact science, but it does give you just a bit of a comparison. And you can see that your minutes, starting in about May, have becoming a little bit closer in terms of comparison, in terms of minute length, length of minutes, in terms of pages, and compared to the length of the meeting itself, much more comparable to the council than they were even prior to May of, May of 2018. And I think you'll begin to continue to see that transition happen as we go forward. Be happy to take any questions about that?
Anyone have any questions? Commissioner Bennett? Are you willing to take comments?
I'm willing to take comments, sure.
Basically, we're making the minutes more like seconds, so that's good. Then my second comment, unfortunately, that was my first. I personally don't think it's that easy to find some of our meetings, the pre-recorded ones, or while they're live and I'm on this commission, so I can imagine it's maybe the same case. I don't know if other people have tried to find them, but it's not as easy as it ought to be.
Okay.
And I just recommend staff or someone looking into it and testing that. I've tried to tell people to tune into it, and they've had issues too, just trying to find it, so.
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bennett, do you mean it's not easy to find them on our website in an archive format? Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll, we'll take a look at that. I found them today, so that's where some of this data came from, but I'll look at it, we'll try to look at it from another, with another set of eyes.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Just a question, what were the number in brackets?
Ah, well, we were trying to find some metric to, to give you some kind of comparison. That number in brackets is the number of minutes per page. So if you're, if you, if you look at your meeting on October 24th, there were 199 minutes of meeting time. There were eight pages. 199 divided by eight is approximately 25.
Okay. And so you're, so are you saying that we are, we are, does anything need to change, I guess, is what I'm asking?
No. I just wanted to let you know that it has been slowly changing, and, and it sounded, from your comments this evening, that you appreciated the change.
Yes.
Okay.
If that's following some type of format, I like the way that, I don't believe we've always seen who spoke before.
Yes.
And the names recorded. I'm sorry, when, especially members of the public.
Yes.
I know you had the information, it didn't always show up in our minutes. And I would agree with you that I think that even our city council doesn't have the luxury to really watch or even try to find the right place in the tape. I think the minutes, don't they go attached to their packet?
They do.
Especially if they're, if it's a project that they have to decide upon, there will be the, the planning commission minutes. And I think that is, just like you said, a sort of a jog or a nudge to go to the tape and see it. My final question is legally, are cities required to save the minutes in a written form, or will a video form suffice?
We are required to, we are required to create a written record of the meeting, but we also are required, because we, we can here and we have made a practice of it, keep a video record of the meeting as well. And that's what we do here, because we've got a long practice of it.
So in a court of law, does, is it the written record that holds up?
Well, that's a good question. We have a long record of keeping a video record of it, and because we have a video record that shows exactly what you say, it would take the place almost of a, of a deposition style minute record. We would provide that to the court, and we've done that before.
Okay. I heard in the past that it's the written record that they ultimately side by, which has always left me in a more conservative sense that, let's get those minutes right. And even if there tends to be more than we need, because we have a videotape, maybe they're for legal reasons, it's, it's good to have it in the written word.
We, we keep them both. Some small cities don't, aren't able to provide the video record like we are, but we keep them both.
And I will say too, that even among our planning commission, we have had meeting minutes pulled up by staff when the issue came before them five years ago or something. And it was very good to be able to read that discussion, not have to go look for a videotape and understand what the issues were at the time. So I do appreciate the written record. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So Scotty, I have to second a lot of the comments. I mean, if the minutes we received tonight are an example of the type of minutes that you're recommending, I think this looks great. I mean, the, you know, I think the minutes are really doing well. I, I share the concern about being able to make sure that information is accessible to the public, and I think, I think Jimmy's kind of right. If you Google Edina Planning Commission meeting minutes or meetings, it sometimes can be hard to find, harder than expected to find the video. So, but otherwise, I don't know. I think you guys are doing a great job, so thanks a lot for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that, we had the highlight of the evening first. So now we'll, now we have staff member Bill Newendorf, who's going to be discussing a potential tax increment financing matter. Thanks, Bill.
Turn that off. Great, thank you, and good evening. I'm Bill Newendorf, from the city's economic development manager. My presentation and request tonight is fairly straightforward. It will sound very similar to requests that I had in front of this group about a month ago. Recently, the city's housing and redevelopment authority recommended that the city consider creating a new tax increment financing district. That would be done to support the construction of affordably priced housing on West 76th Next week, the city council has scheduled a public hearing to give all interested parties an opportunity to weigh in on that proposal, on that request. And my visit here tonight is done, one of the several steps that we do in advance of the public hearings, to make sure that we talk to a number of different parties, the school districts, the county, et cetera. So specifically, when it comes to the use of tax increment financing, this is an economic development tool that's been in Minnesota since the 70s, and there's over 40 years of legislative history and rules and regulations to follow. We've, we've discussed some of those in the past. The law has not changed since my last visit here. But specifically, the city and the planning commission, on behalf of the city, is asked to render an opinion regarding whether or not the project that's envisioned in this TIF plan generally conforms with the, with the long-term plans of the city or the comprehensive plan. So there is a resolution in the packet that has pretty much the same verbiage from the previous resolution that would, that would make such an opinion. And the project, let me run through this. I included the full TIF plan in the packet, at least the most recent draft of it, and also a few maps, which I have up on the screen here. So the TIF district itself is called the West 76th Street TIF District. If created, this would become the city's seventh tax increment financing district. The existing districts, we have six of them, and they range in size from a couple parcels to, to several large parcels. So for example, this would be one parcel, two acres in size. On the others, on the other end of the spectrum, our Southdale II TIF District is about 100 acres in size. It's Southdale Mall and the, and the neighboring properties. So there's, the TIF districts come in many shapes and sizes. But the reason that we're recommending that we pursue this strategy is to help provide financing for a proposed project by Aon, which would consist of 80 units of affordably priced housing. The project that we have in mind is the same that was presented or submitted to the city back in August. It was presented to this body on October 10th and recommended to be approved. Subsequently, it was passed on to the city council, who recommended approval, not of the entire project. We still have to go through site plan review and all those steps, but just to modify the comprehensive plan to make sure that the general mass of the building, the general scope of the building would be possible there. And so the, the, the TIF plan in Appendix A does identify that the intention of using tax increment financing would be to help finance this particular building. So the, the developer is with us tonight, if there's any questions, but at this point, we do not have any updated plans. The plans we submitted in August and the ones in your packet are still the most recent. The developer will make another visit through the planning commission and the city council in early 2019, is the plan, once they have more specific details on the building. So certainly, they would take the, the comments that were rendered at the past meeting and then come back with a, with a full package. But the request tonight is, is fairly simple and fairly narrow in scope. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I will leave it at that.
Thanks, Bill. Are there any questions? Commissioner Lee?
Thank you, Bill. A question I had, and actually, I did re-review the, your TIF presentation in October. So you had a graphic that, kind of a flow chart, if you will, a bubble diagram that explains sort of the process. And on that chart, it states that the TIF district is created first. And then, once that district is created, then a proposal is evaluated, if one is forthcoming, for meeting the requirements of that, the TIF district. It feels, though, we tend to do that a little backwards here, that we approve a project first and then create a TIP district afterwards. Can you talk a little bit about how that plays out? Is that permissible? Is that common? Is that a typical way to, to, to do the TIF approval?
Sure, sure. And Commissioner Lee, I, I think I have the schematic that you had referenced on the screen. If Caitlin can turn that on. Does that look like the one? Okay, yep, that's a stack on that, a stock graphic that we use. So with the use of tax increment finding, financing and land use planning, there's really no one correct process or any one particular incorrect process. It really is a matter of what the objectives are, what the timing, timing is, those types of matters. So in, in this case, Aon approached the city maybe a year ago? I don't recall exactly. They had wanted to do a project in Edina for a while and are trying to find the right site. They were looking at a different property. That transaction was not able to be, it didn't go through. And so they started looking for other properties and found this building at 4100 West 76 that was for sale on the market, had been on the market for a while, and not a lot of interest in it, in its, in its current configuration. So they did ask our, our support, or asked us to consider supporting their project. That went through the HRA, just in, not a sketch plan, but just kind of a concept. What do you think about helping to finance this? We have affordable housing policies. We say this is our goal. Here's an opportunity to, to deliver. So back in May of 2018, the developer provided a schematic-based pro forma of what they thought they could deliver, deliver on the site, and started to work through some of the financial arrangements. When it comes to affordably priced housing, while they are affordably priced for the residents, there's a whole stream of monies and funders that makes it affordable. And they had asked, the developer had asked the city to be part of that solution, to fund their, their project. So this, the HRA did pass a resolution back in May that pledged to consider the creation of a TIF district and the application of TIF to help fund their project. Recently, about two weeks ago, they did acquire the property, and so while they do have site control, they are actively pursuing grants and financing for other financial resources as well. So for this particular case, the process that we're using is what is necessary to get to the end, to the goal of creating the affordably priced housing.
And there, you also said there were two types of TIF financing, and then the state's pretty clear about when you can use it. Can you explain those again and tell us which type of TIP this would be for? Does that make sense?
Yeah. So Minnesota state law defines several different types of tax increment districts. They each have their own separate chapter or subchapter with their own separate set of rules. Redevelopment districts, renewal districts, housing districts, environmentally contaminated districts, economic development districts. There's a whole variety. In this case, we are seeking to, to create a housing district. We're also seeking to use special legislation that the city was, that the city secured in St. Paul back in 2014 to provide financing for projects that have 20% of the units affordably priced. That was special legislation that the city pursued because we had tried to, to get different types of housing, and we just couldn't find the right developers to make it happen. So this would be the, the second application of that special legislation for a housing district. The first one helped fund the Beacon Interfaith Housing Project, or 66 West. That was finished in 2016. So if successful, this would be the second project that we could absolutely finance and help fund here in Edina, using that special housing district legislation.
Any further comments? Commissioner Berube?
So thank you for your presentation. I have a question for you about affordable housing in Edina in general. So it seems to me that, given the choice of a separate building or having affordable housing units scattered throughout, you know, it seems that you'd prefer the latter. So it sounds like an opportunity came up, a builder came up, the land was here, so this is an opportunity where we'll have one building of affordable housing, which doesn't seem ideal, but maybe we have to take advantage of the opportunity. It's better than nothing. Can you speak to who ultimately makes that decision, that we're going to have one building versus scattered throughout? And then what that means for the future? Is that our strategy now?
Sure. I'll hap, happy to speak to that as best as I can. I'll try to channel our new affordable housing development manager that we hired a few months ago, Stephanie Hawkinson, who is not with us this evening. But the city's policy regarding affordably priced housing currently is just working with developers as they come into the city, asking for regulatory modifications or any kind of financial assistance they are required to do at least 10 or 20% of the units as affordably priced housing. At this point, the city does not have a firm policy about how other units would be delivered. So it's, right now, we've, we've taken a variety of approaches to that. Some projects that have been approved by this body in the city council have some units scattered within those buildings, and they will be affordably priced for 15 years. Other projects, like the one proposed by Aon, would have 80 units in one building. It would be affordably priced for 40 years and most likely forever. That's their corporate mission. That's what they do. So I've heard a number of comments over the, over the years about, you know, well, 15 years sounds great, but what happens in year 16? Now we're back down to zero. So certainly, having a longer, longer term of affordability is highly desirable, in my opinion. But at this point, the city does not have a firm policy about preferring one over the other. And so as we've tried to create more units, we've tried to create a balance. So I know the, the Edina Housing Foundation is working on affordably priced housing on a different site, in a different neighborhood in, in the city. This was an opportunity that came up. One of the things that we liked about it from an affordability perspective is its proximity to employment, to schools, to parks, to shopping, to services, to transit, to highways. It's a, this general area is a very good location for affordably priced housing, and it's a, it's the right opportunity at the right time, and that's why staff is recommending that we go, that we go ahead and support it.
Carrie, would you like to add to that at all?
Sure, I could add, you know, we've had a general overarching policy of wanting to scatter affordable housing throughout the city. You know, you might have one building that's all affordable, but not necessarily three, four, five, six, eight affordable buildings all next to each other. The idea is to spread it throughout Edina. There will be entirely affordable buildings in some locations and then some that are the mixture. Again, want to reiterate that the planning commission ask here is, is this proposal consistent with the comprehensive plan? Not necessarily the details of TIF and how that works. And this was an amendment that was approved, recommended by the planning commission, oh, a couple of months ago, and then the city council approved the amendment. So the ask, that the land use is consistent with the comp plan, from staff perspective.
Thank you, Carrie. Are there any other questions, comments? Any? Sue?
I have a question pertaining to the resolution. Could you explain just a clarification? So this is called a modification to the tax increment financing plan for the Southdale II tax increment financing district and a tax increment financing plan for the West 76th Street tax increment financing district. Is it because this was part of the Southdale II tax increment financing district?
Complicated question. Complicated wording to that question, but Commissioner Lee, the, when the city secured special legislation to help finance affordably priced housing, the language that was approved by our state legislature required us not just to create a separate TIF district, but to include it as part of the Southdale II, to draw a connection there. So that's why, when it comes to all the paperwork that will eventually be filed, there will be an amendment to the Southdale II district. There's a whole separate 80-page plan for that district. And then we have to create a separate district for this parcel, and there's language that connects both of those plans together. In short, from a financing perspective, what we, what we hope to do and, and expect to do is take some of the excess monies that, that have been created by the new housing, like the one Southdale Place housing, that does, does not, that was built before affordable housing policy. That has created significant new taxes. We hope to use some of those monies and direct it to other projects like the Aon that have afford, that have affordably priced housing. And in order to do that, you've got to run through a very complicated title, and rather than just doing one report, we have to do two. And that's just one of those quirky things that our state legislature mandated.
So to be able to, to funnel the money over there, it has to become part of the Southdale II TIP district, is what you're saying?
It's It's not part of the district, but we have to modify the, the modifications to that document, I think are about two sentences long, that just recognize that there's another TIF district. But in order to modify it, we have to go through the whole process.
Okay. And then on the last page of that resolution, the language there, the middle paragraph, "Whereas the commission has reviewed the plans to determine their conformity with the development principles of the Greater Southdale Area Study." I would, I'm not sure that we have development principles. I think what we've called them are the 2015 France Avenue Southdale Area Working Principles. And I guess I'd like to be a stickler about that, because we have been making decisions up here on the bench based on some documents and what we assume the Greater Southdale Work Group will eventually land on. But I think for something like this, we really, to date, only have those working principles. And I think that's what you're trying to say, is the working principles of the Southdale Study. If we're going to sign off in conformance with the comp plan, that is the only document that really has been used to guide us in terms of evaluating, it's how the developer responds to the principles.
So Chair and Commissioner, the language that we used here was, I believe, the same language, the same language that this body edited the last two times. There was similar wordsmithing the last two times we've done this. So I believe we just cut and paste the same terminology that you requested the last few times. If you feel that's important, it doesn't make a big difference to me, one way or the other, but we try to be consistent with what you asked us to prepare the last few times.
I do feel strongly about that, because we're getting to the end of the comp plan process, and it's been clear what we have to date, and what, there's a couple draft documents, still in draft form. There's principles, there's design guidelines, there's the plan. So I think we have to be specific at what, at this point in time, what did we really evaluate that project against? It was the guidelines, I mean, the, what we're calling the working principles. So if we can tweak it, I think that would be great.
I suspect that the last time we had a tax increment financing presentation regarding that district, that there was a different term, probably. You know, I think the Southdale, Greater Southdale Working Group has changed a little bit over time. That's probably what, that's probably the core of this comment, probably. Are there any other comments? So I just had a couple. First of all, Bill, thank you very much for a good presentation tonight, and a very good back and forth. So, you know, I think you really made a nice presentation tonight, and we appreciate what you're doing for this project also. With the, I would, actually, for the resolution, I would just ask, in the future, if you make reference to a, like you made reference, the October 10th minute meeting of our group, if you could include that. I was like, oh, did we do a comprehensive plan amendment, or did we do a sketch plan? I was trying to figure that out as I was going through. So that would be good. And if there's anything, if, you know, if there's a connection you could make next time, you know, for those principles of the Greater Southdale Area. I know why you have to include that, is because that's something that you want to make sure that you're complying with everything you're supposed to comply with. If you can just kind of include something in here. The other comment I had is, I just want everyone to know, I think you mentioned the 2014 legislation, and it's my understanding that that wasn't just Edina legislation, that there was, it was a state, you know, there was a motion in the state dealing with this kind of issue for very, for many municipalities, and Edina was one of them. And similarly, there was a 2017 amendment that extended the district. Is that correct, or 2016?
That's actually incorrect. The city of Edina pursued that legislation on our own.
Okay.
So every year, there's probably four to 10 different special legislation, or different efforts put on by different municipalities or counties in greater Minnesota, that deal with a number of different details about tax increment financing and other development tools. But this particular one was exclusively for Edina. At one point in the, oh, I forgot if it was the Senate, either the Senate or the House did have a debate about whether or not they should just do a blanket amendment for the whole state, and there were representatives on that committee that wanted to use Edina as a testbed, to see if this actually did work better. And so they stuck with the language that was prepared by their staff.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, thank you. So, I mean, are there any, I mean, any questions or comments that further anyone's understanding of whether this complies with our, you know, relevant documents, or relevant ordinances, or otherwise, does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion? You guys are being very polite to each other.
I would move to approve.
Thank you, John. Is there a second? Would anyone like to second?
Second.
Thank you, Jerry. Do we need to do a voice, can we do a voice vote, or do we need to do a roll call vote? Everyone okay with a voice vote? Okay. Is everyone in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you, Bill.
So, can I ask a question? I'm sorry. So you just approved the resolution as written, or was it as modified?
John?
As modified.
Just slight modification.
Okay. So perhaps we can, we can play the tape over again, but we'll get that edit in there? Okay. All right. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. All right. Next, we move to the public hearing portion of our agenda, and the first one is a variance request for 5913 Hanson Road.
5913 Hanson Road is approximately 28,000 square feet in area, and is located on the east side of Hanson Road, north of 60th Street, and south of Benton Avenue. The existing home on the lot is a split-level home that was built in 1966, and was built without a garage, and with a non-conforming front yard setback, as the house stands today. The applicant has submitted an application for two separate variances, the first being a 30.79-foot front yard setback variance request, and the second being a 1.7-foot first-floor elevation variance for a proposed new home. The subject property has a required front yard setback of 93.09 feet, and that is due to the fact that the existing home to the north of the subject property is currently setback 145.27 feet from the west property line, and the home to the south of the subject property is setback 40.9 feet. The existing first floor of the home sits at 932.3 feet above sea level, and the zoning code allows a one-foot increase in the first floor elevation of a new home. So the new home would be allowed to sit at 933.3 feet, and the applicant is proposing the first floor sit at 935 feet above sea level. The engineering department has reviewed and has submitted comments based on the drainage plan. The proposed grading will closely match the existing drainage paths, and drainage in the rear of the property is directed towards an existing flow path, which currently exists along the south property line. The applicant, he also noted that the applicant should direct drainage on Hanson Road, or any area that can be directed towards the street for the front half of the property. The stormwater management plan shows two rain gardens to mitigate additional drainage to neighboring properties, and the public infrastructure downstream on 60th Street. The outside of the two variances that are requested tonight, the proposed home is compliant with the city's zoning code. As you know, Minnesota statute and the city of Edina zoning ordinance requires that certain conditions must be met with a proposed variance request, the first being that it must relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use from complying with the zoning ordinance. The practical difficulty for the front yard setback variance tonight is caused by the existing location of the homes to the north and south of the subject property. The existing setback of 145 feet to the home to the north of the subject property skews the average setback for the subject property. The proposed new home is setback roughly at 62.3 feet, and the current existing non-conforming setback of the main structure of the home sits at 61.4 feet, and that does not include the existing carport or canopy shed area that is shown on the existing survey. City code allows for the issuance of a variance to increase the first floor elevation of a new home, one foot above the existing first floor elevation, if it meets one of three conditions. And those conditions are if it elevates the lowest level of the dwelling outside of a flood area, if it elevates the lowest level of the dwelling to protect it from any groundwater intrusion, or to elevate the first floor elevation to meet any state statute or building code requirements. There is not a flood plain, groundwater, or building code issue with this, tonight's proposal. If the basement was dug deeper into the ground, and different floor trusses or construction methods were used, the first floor elevation of this home could meet the one-foot requirement. The city engineer has stated that the front yard should drain towards the street. If the planning commission believes that the added first floor height provides better protection from drainage due to elevation of the street and the proposed home, a case could be made that the city's requirement for variances over one foot of the existing first floor has been met. The second condition to approve a variance is that there are circumstances that are unique to the property and that are not common, and the placement of the homes to the north and the south of the subject property are unique and are not created by the applicant, and therefore, staff has, staff believes that the front yard setback request is justified. The existing home, like I said, is a split-level home, and the first floor elevation of a split-level home is the elevation where the front door entry is located. The applicant is proposing to place the garage elevation at a similar elevation to where the street sits, which was similar to where the first floor elevation of the existing home sits today, but the existing home does not have a garage, so that is the lowest, the current lowest elevation of the home today. So the applicant is proposing that the garage sit at a similar level to where the home currently sits today, and that the first floor sits above that at 935. The third condition is that the variance won't alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and staff believes that granting the variance for the front yard setback requirement will not alter the character of the neighborhood. The existing home on the, the existing home of the subject property has a very similar placement on the lot, as the applicant is proposing. And, like I said, and that's to the main structure, there is a carport on the lot, or on the house today, and that the proposed house will sit similarly to where the main structure of the house sits today, not the carport. The first floor height variance request will not alter the character of the neighborhood. There are other two-story homes in the general area, and the proposed home is a two-story home that meets the city's overall height requirement. So tonight, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission approve the front yard setback variance based on the findings and the conditions outlined in the staff report. And the city code, like I said, allows for the issuance of a variance to increase the first floor elevation if there are certain circumstances that are met. The variance request is not to elevate the home out of a flood zone, and is not to meet certain building code requirements. And if the proposed basement was dug deeper into the ground, or different floor trusses, or construction methods were used, the first floor elevation could meet that one-foot requirement. But if the planning commission believes that setting the first floor higher than the street elevation helps the front yard drain to the street, and provides more elevation for that drainage and grading to work more effectively, the commission could approve the variance based on the alternate findings and conditions also listed in the staff report. And I believe the applicant is here today, if you have any questions, or I stand for any questions as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily. Any questions for Emily? Commissioner Lee?
Thanks for that report. I just wanted to make one comment, and obviously, this is kind of a gray area, but in your point number three, will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? Character is many things. It's not simply just placement on the lot, or if it matches the number of stories of its neighbors. I think inherent in this requirement is to look at it holistically, as well as some of the way the house is, the type, building style, building type, massing. So in the future, I would just say, take a look at all those things when you make that determination, if it actually does match the character of the neighborhood. Thanks.
Any other questions for?
Emily, I have a question for you. In the staff report, there's a, one page has an image, and it shows the subject property marked in red. And then, if I look at it, you know, if I look at it, landscape orientation with Hanson Road at the top of the page, there's a house to the left, which is, what, north?
Yes.
And then there's a house to the right, which is, actually, no, no, to the right is north.
To the right is...
To the top where you're looking is north, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay. And it's that parcel right there that creates the setback issue. Is that correct?
This parcel is setback, the main structure of the house is setback 145 feet.
Okay. And then, so, and then, the idea for this house, is it that the setback on the house in the, you know, the subject property would be roughly equivalent to the setback of the property immediately below it on that picture?
No, it would be setback similarly to, the current house today has a carport, which you can see on the picture to the right. So you see that outline here in, on the subject property. The proposed house tonight would sit similar, with a similar setback of the main portion of the house, excluding that carport area. So it would sit very similarly to where the main portion of the house sits today.
Okay, so it'd be a little farther away from the road?
Excluding that carport, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Emily, that was my question.
Commissioner Hamilton?
I think the owner's going to have to address this, but if you look at the photo of Eady to the right, the building up there... We see a little pond, a little ponding in the driveway, which seems to indicate that the driveway is pretty darned flat from the house to the street. I'm sorry, I'm trying, I'm looking at that grading plan, and I'm seeing no topography noted in there at all, so it seems like to me it's dead level, or very close to that between the house and the street. Do I read that accurately?
I think the applicant might be able to answer that specific question on ponding.
Fair enough.
But the proposed home today, the first floor would sit similarly to where the proposed garage on the proposed home would sit.
I got that piece.
Okay. And I think the street, the elevation of the street changes whether you move north and south.
Yes.
So that also might affect it.
Any further questions? Do you want to, or do you want to ask?
No, that's it.
You want to hold on that one? Okay. Anyone else? Well, why don't we hear from the applicant?
Eric Zender, address is, was Zender Homes, address is 14240 23rd Avenue North in Plymouth. Commissioner Hamilton, to address your question about the flatness of the front yard, it currently is pretty flat, it actually probably decreases slightly. The street is at a 932 to a 933. The existing first floor is at a 932.3. So depending on where you measure it from the driveway, it's actually lower than the street. So that is sort of the impetus of asking for the first floor elevation increase, is to bring it up above the street elevation, so we can drain accurately towards the street. And there is, it was noted in the staff report too, that there could potentially be issues with the sewer. I think there will be issues with the sewer if we can't raise it, and there might still be issues even if we can't, because it is a split-level home, so the existing walkout elevation is 928.6. If we're granted the variance for the first floor elevation, it'll be 924.5, so we're still four feet lower. If we're not granted, it'll be 922.8, so it's going to be even more drastic. So certainly could be issues with that as well. Happy to answer any other questions.
So is that the impetus for wanting, why you want to raise the elevation slightly?
The first initial one, I mean, to be quite honest, I didn't even think about the sewer until the staff actually thought about it, but it is certainly something that's going to be affected by it. The initial thought is to bring it up, so it's not a negative grade from the street to the house.
Thanks. Any further questions for the applicants? Okay, well, thank, thank you. Well, and then, do you have anything else you'd like to share?
I mean, not really. I mean, staff answered, or laid it out pretty well. I mean, I think that the, the front yard setback is pretty straightforward, we're not, we're actually getting further away from the street than the carport is. It's, so I think that's very straightforward. The first floor elevation, I certainly understand if you don't pass it, it's not something that I'm going to, you know, be, I'm not going to fall on my sword over it, let's put it that way. It's, I think it would be nice, I think it would help. I think it will help with drainage, but it's not, it's not absolutely essential, so I'm not going to get all worked up about it, so.
Let me ask a follow-up question to that. So it looks like your height, it looks like city standards 36 point, 36 and 2/3 feet, and it looks like you are recommending, or you're planning to come in just, just a hair over 36 feet?
Yeah, I mean, it's just slightly under the allowed height for the building structure.
Is that partly because of the first floor raising, or is that just because of how you designed the house?
Well, I guess it would actually probably reduce it, because it's from existing grade, correct?
Yeah, but the overall height is measured from the average existing grade of the lot. So it would reduce it overall.
Yeah.
So it would reduce it overall, the height, if it is further down into the lot.
Okay.
Or into the parcel.
Which would reduce it? I'm sorry. I know you're explaining it well, and I'm not understanding it, but are you saying that including the height, including the first floor variance would reduce the height, or not including the height variance?
The, I guess the overall, it wouldn't change, that 36.
The, the house is the house.
Yes, the house is the house, but it's measured from average existing grade today.
I see, okay.
So that measurement wouldn't stay, but it would sit lower on the parcel.
All right, now I understand perfectly. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Do you have anything else? Otherwise, thank you.
No, I don't, I don't think so. Thank you.
So, this is the part where we have audience participation. Anyone who'd like to speak on this particular matter may speak up to three minutes, just come to the front, state your name and address, and share your thoughts. Everyone, not everyone, any...
Motion.
Close of public hearing?
Second.
So, motion, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that brings us back up to us, and it's time we can start sharing our thoughts. Commissioner Bennett.
Yeah, just, you know, looking at this proposal, I, I appreciate how thorough it is compared to a lot of ones. I feel like a lot of the measures that are designed to mitigate the risk of a new structure here are, are being done and explored, you know, having rain gardens in the front and the back, as well as trying to minimize impact to the neighborhood, keep things as close to as where they were as possible, is just commendable. There's a lot of different ways you could have done this, and to me, if, you know, the one foot, you know, exceeding the one foot is to, you know, protect that character of the neighborhood, you don't want a house propped up like we've seen before, this is .7 feet above that, so, I mean, if you're looking at the home and it's eight inches taller than what is required, not really a big deal, but eight inches is a big deal when it comes to drainage, so. It seems to better protect this home, to prop it up a little bit more, to keep away from flooding from the street that could possibly come back to the house, and they have a rain garden in the front to treat that runoff before it gets to the street anyways, because that's another concern. So all in all, I, I think the practical difficulty is pretty obvious, and they're, you know, we're, we're leaving it with this variance to make a, a smart project happen.
Any other comments?
I agree.
I agree. Okay, that's the comment we got from, any other, anyone else? Sue?
This is a very large house, and I believe that character should embody architectural character as well as massing. The applicant has shown the, the adjacent houses, and they are essentially one-story. I agree there are two stories in the neighborhood, but they tend to be ramblers, so they're walkouts, and they sit low to the ground. This is going to appear to sit very high. So I'm not, I'm making the point that I don't necessarily agree that it is in keeping with the character of the area, but that is a requirement in order to ask for a variance. One is to make sure that, number one, it is fitting in character with the area. I did a little research on what is the proper slope to meet a sewer pipe. The sewer pipe is actually out of the jurisdiction of the homeowner, that is already set by the city or the county or whatever, it is there. What they have to do is make a connection to the pipe that goes from the sewer pipe onto their property, and building code recommends a, a pretty finite range, a quarter inch to three-inch maximum slope per foot. It does not actually recommend much outside of it, the reason being, limiting the pitch is meant to prevent wastewater from running at a very high flow rate to enter the public sewer and interfere with the, with the flow rates in the public sewer. So as far as making connections for interior plumbing, I think it would be best to just adhere to building code and not try to necessarily second-guess by increasing inches that somehow we are making a situation better. If it is for the purpose of site drainage, we are actually talking about trying to hold a lot of water onto properties, giving it time to percolate, rather than trying to rush it out to the curb. So again, in this case, I, I don't, I tend to agree with staff that we have those regulations in place. This, this, this house can easily be built within the confines of the existing regulations, and therefore, I'm not going to support the variance request.
Thank you. Any, any other comments or questions, discussion? Emily, I, well, I think other people are thinking, I have a question for you, and that is, just to clarify in, in my mind, was this idea of elevating, did that, did that come from the engineering department?
The initial idea was, or the request was the ask for the variance, and then it was reviewed by the engineering department, and in conversations with him is when the sanitary sewer item or portion came up.
And so, did you get a sense, does the engineering department have a recommendation which way they would prefer we go?
I think it, based on conversations that I had with them, and you can read the memo in there, that he was included, I don't think it gets into specifics with the sanitary sewer, but it could be worked out either way.
Okay, thanks. So then that, I guess the question becomes, if we were, you know, the, the staff memo is pretty clear about the situations in which we've granted first floor elevation variances, and that's why the staff recommended not doing it, but, you know, being flexible, the staff also said, look, here's some reasons if you wish to, but we're kind of, kind of be creating a new reason to do a first floor elevation exception, right?
If you feel that it meets the intrusion of the groundwater, which, or the drainage, then you could...
Okay.
Make a point that it meets that requirement.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments, questions? I don't wanna, I, I kinda wish that engineering came out and said, yeah, this meets that reason, I'd, I'd feel better. Commissioner Bennett?
And, I mean, just to follow up, I, I guess with, you know, the pitch of the sanitary and what, if they, you know, if they built this to conform, and we're talking, again, it's about eight inches over 64 feet, so I mean, the change in pitch there relative to what you're accommodating is very, very small. So, I mean, one, maybe possibly one hundredth of a foot, if you space it over that connection, so I think that's very, you know, a lot more minimal than it is for the potential for water to come back toward a home. And we have a neighbor that their driveway goes into their home, and, you know, there's a big storm event, and those are getting worse and worse, more than what we're predicting. And to me, like, if we have a chance to mitigate that on behalf of doing this, that seems like an obvious one to, to go forward with.
Good points. Is there any more discussion, or does, Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, this is kind of weird that we're asked to deal with such technical issues. I mean, by having the water go more onto the, I guess I'm asking you, onto the street, is that making it go into the city sewer system faster than it would if it, you know, filtered through the current pathways and using the rain gardens and whatnot? Is that a...
Well, you know, to me, they, they have a measure to slow down and collect, they have a rain garden in the front yard. I mean, whether a driveway is at more pitch or not, that water's still going fast and not infiltrating, so, you know, it gets into, you know, if the driveway were smaller, you know, it'd do better than, you know, changing the pitch eight inches over 60 feet. So to me, that's, I'm not going to comment, but personally, I think that's negligible.
I mean, just because newer houses tend to have larger driveways and a lot more hard surface, you know, so, yeah, I don't know, this is difficult.
Any other comments, motions? Commissioner Berube?
I just wanted to make the one comment that I think, because it is difficult, it's one of those things that on the surface seems very straightforward, and then you start talking about water surfaces and all kinds of things that are way over my head that I have no experience in. In, in that regard, I just need to rely on what our engineering, the city of Edina Engineering Department advises. They know way more than I do, and their job is to do what's right for Edina. If we think there is an issue with either the way they're doing it or the policy, then I think we need to address that more broadly and not in particular to one project. And there may be opportunity to do that, but for this particular project, at this moment, I'm going to rely on what the city engineer says in this memo. And so I don't see any reason to think it's a problem.
To, sorry, to think, elevating or not eleva...
To think that the, the water, the stormwater, it may in fact be a problem.
I see.
I don't have the capability, the education, experience to know that, so I need to rely on the experts. We may find out that it is a problem, in which case, we have a broader issue than just this property. So for this particular property, I'm not in a position to say that we shouldn't approve the variance for the seven feet, or seven inches, eight inches.
Okay. Any other comments or motions? Or want to talk some more, or? Anyone?
I move that we approve the variance, as outlined in the staff memo.
The height, the, the, the setback and the height?
Correct.
Any seconds?
I'll second that.
Okay. Could we do a voice vote on, is there any further discussion? Are we good? Are we ready to vote?
I believe what the motion says is that the house is not elevated above, is that your motion?
As prepared in the...
Are you recommending to do the one foot, or not to do the one foot?
As a staff.
To do the one foot, but not the one foot, eight.
Recommending for the setback and against the, the raising above the one foot?
Correct.
Recommending, okay, so, yeah, thank you, John. Thank you very much. You've only done this about 50 times, saving my bacon. So, so, yes, to be clear, we have a motion to approve the setback variance and to deny...
Up to 62.3, yes.
To deny the elevation variance. And is that, is that what you're seconding?
And I have to ask you...
Would anyone else like to second that, if, you know?
I'll second that, and then let's have some discussion.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, so we have a motion to approve the setback variance, but deny the increase over one foot. And we've motioned a second, would anyone else like to speak about that any further? Commissioner Bennett?
So my discussion, it has to meet one of the three conditions, right? And it lists the three conditions out, and they feel like they do not exist for the site. Again, number two is to elevate the lowest level of the dwelling to protect from groundwater intrusion. We don't consider the first level and where the driveway acts as a conduit of water. So when a house is close to the elevation of the street, that is inherently a risk. It's not one of our conditions, but we have a chance to address it here. I have a neighbor whose driveway does that, and I'll tell you, that was a huge issue a month ago. So, that's not in here, and that's why they left it to our discretion, said that's a perfectly good reason to go against these three conditions.
Explain that a little bit, if, if you, I, I think what the issue is, is when the water is running down the street at high speed, and you've got a storm event, it can make a right turn right into your driveway and right into your garage, because you're level. Does that impact the house? No, not particularly, but it does flood your garage. Is that a structural problem? No, which is why our, our contractor friend is saying, I can live with it. Is it what you want, for Edina to have flooded garages? And I don't think it's the best answer for the house, especially when it's an easy answer to fix. And I think it should be fixed.
That's what I meant to say.
Me, too.
Very good. Any, any further discussion? Commissioner Lee?
When we get these issues, I think that we don't need to be looking at it at such a microscopic level. We have a staff who has remedied a recommendation, which I think is, is, is a sound recommendation. And even engineering said, if you want, you could look at it this way, has not flagged it as a red flag issue. So to avoid getting into more of sort of these things, I think it sets a precedence every time something like this comes before it, that we analyze it to death, and we're not the experts. If we haven't, and actually, Commissioner Berube, I, I thought you were going the other way with it, if we have not had conclusive recommendation from our engineering or our staff for it, why would we second-guess them? I'll just leave it at that.
So I, thank you. I'm starting to feel like we're circling the same points, so I'm going to, if it's okay with everyone, I'm going to call for a, a roll vote. Then, and the same was against that, because I think we're, I think we've established the, everyone's made very good points. Ms. Olson, would you do us the honor?
Absolutely. Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee, nay.
Oh, aye, aye, right? We're, we're doing the actual motion as, as staff.
The motion is to approve the, as drafted in the staff memo.
Aye.
Okay.
Commissioner?
That we're approving the setback and denying the first floor.
Yes. Your motion.
That's, that's good, thank you.
You have to vote, though.
It's your turn.
You, me? Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov?
Aye.
So do we know, okay, everyone, just, just a clarification, we just voted to approve the setback variance and deny elevating the height of the...
So we denied eight inches?
Yes.
And we'll let the, we'll let it flood?
Let the garage flood.
We'll let the garage flood.
I do, I do just have a follow-up comment, if that's okay. I mean, we already voted, right?
The, the, the horse is suffering, so, okay.
As for precedent, again, staff has to stand by those three conditions, and it doesn't conform to those. So they can't say, they can't recommend going against those conditions. However, this is like the first time I've seen where they offer the alternative, so, I mean...
So, they, they have all, the staff has offered alternative many times, and, and I, I must say, it's one thing that I really appreciate. They're saying, here's what we recommend, but if you choose to find another way, here's some valid, here, here's some good reasoning for you. And I think it's, I think it's just an excellent piece of work when staff does that. So I, I've noticed it more maybe because I've felt, I've, I've been torn more on other issues. Is everyone, I, I mean, I'm sorry to do this, but is everyone comfortable, is everyone aware of how they voted?
Yep.
Okay. I think the motion to approve the staff memo has been approved, and so, thank you to the applicant, and I think that's going, will that go before the city council? So we've made the decision. Good luck. It looks like a nice house, and thank you for everything. So, wow, guys. Okay, next item on our agenda is solar energy systems ordinance amendments.
So, planning commissioners, and this is a proposed solar zoning ordinance amendment. This was actually in front of you in September, and it was presented by Casey Casella, the city management fellow, and Tara Brown, our sustainability coordinator. Neither of them are with us tonight, unfortunately. This ordinance, the goal is draft proposed language changes to the zoning code that intentionally or unintentionally prohibit solar PV development, and this is in support of a solo smart application. And so, this was reviewed by the planning commission in September, and gathered feedback from the planning commission, so it is now returning to you as an ordinance... from the planning commission, so it is now returning to you as an ordinance amendment. Changes included in the, in the proposed amendment are remove the building coverage exemption. Originally, there, we were going to have that as an exemption for the solar installations, and it was recommended that we still include that as building coverage. We do clarify the height restrictions in that our current ordinance does, it does limit the height of the solar installation to the height of the buildings. So that was already addressed in our ordinance. So staff recommends the changes for section 36-10, adding a definition of solar energy system. Currently, we don't have a definition of it. We also are recommending an accessory use amendment that solar energy systems has by right accessory use in all major zoning districts, and then we would exempt them from the solar energy system for screening. There was a ordinance amendment proposed in your packets, highlighted in yellow, are those changes? They were based on the recommendations of that September meeting. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have. The next steps would be public hearing for the proposed zoning changes this evening and the public hearing at city council for reading of the proposed changes proposed for December 4th.
Thanks, Chris. Questions? Could you, could you just remind me, I mean, my memory is really flagging tonight, why we decided to exempt it from the screening requirements?
Because the screening would shade. It shield, it has a tendency to really be a problem in terms of, you know, they'll have to engineer it so that it's not shielding them and from the sun.
A screened solar panel is a non-functioning solar panel?
Correct.
Okay.
It becomes a problem.
Tilted shade. Advised.
Any, any, any other comments? Anyone, any discussion? Questions for Chris? I mean, I'm moving right ahead here, but, no, this is a, if not, this is a public hearing, so anyone in the public can speak, but please come up. You have three minutes, just state your name and address, and then, thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. Good evening, chair and commissioners. My name's Jim Corson, and I live at 4606 Casco over in the Country Club District. I'm here to support the solar changes, the ordinance changes, to ensure our people feel supported by the statutes and have fewer obstacles to putting in practical solar systems that deliver sustainable energy. My support comes from my own experience in, in our solar installation planned early in 2017 and installed and started up in August of last year. We've had 14 months of real energy savings, all delivered by a real simple, nice-looking solar panel installation on our garage roof. Our home is a fairly typical country club house, 1930s detached garage. In our case, we have a flat garage roof with some Mediterranean tile accents to match our home. And then the 16 solar panels just lay right on the flat roof and have a slight slope facing south, so I didn't face the screening issue, but I support that change as well. These solar panels just tie up to a simple inverter, and then they feed into the main electrical panel in my house. Depending on the day, we're using less electricity from the grid with our solar panels feeding into the house, or occasionally and often, we're putting power back onto the grid if our demand is low. Over the first 12 months of our system running, our energy demand was down 40% versus the previous year, so I'm really satisfied with that performance from my relatively modest system. And our family's proud to be doing a little bit for sustainability and to be a little bit more energy independent ourselves and for our, our area. So I suppose installing and owning your own solar system is not for everybody, and certainly not suitable for every home, but it worked well for us, and I really value living in a city that's forward-looking, that supports efficiency and sustainability while still remaining an attractive community. So I support the changes. Thanks very much.
Thank you for speaking tonight. Anyone else here tonight like to speak about this issue? Seeing none, any?
Move to close.
Second, anyone second?
Second.
Motion, all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Thank you. We have approved. Discussion, do we have any further discussion about this amendment? Do we have any motions? Commissioner Bennett?
I just want to thank resident for coming in and, you know, making the pitch to get behind this. I feel like we're all probably behind it, but it's, it's good to have that momentum to the decision.
Any other-
And I motion to approve the, the requests as highlighted in the, well, the zoning ordinance amended, amendment as highlighted in the staff memo.
I'll second.
Thanks. Commissioner Lee, did you have something you wanted to?
Just a follow-up to Commissioner Bennett, that it was nice to hear actually a resident who lives in the Country Club District, because that is very helpful information. Sometimes you think about, maybe this is only applicable in certain parts of Edina, but it was, it was good to have that feedback, so appreciate that additional information.
Any further discussion? Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Well, thank you very much. Chris, make sure you tell Casey and Tara how what a great job they did. And then we have, our final agenda item tonight is a preliminary rezoning and preliminary development plan with variances at 4532 France Avenue in the 44th and France neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, chair members of the commission. So this property is located?
On the 44th and France District. It's just south of, south of Sunnyside, the west side of France. The property is currently zoned R1, low dense, or single dwelling unit district. It's an existing single-family home that was, it was built as a single-family home, obviously, but repurposed somewhere in the 60s, 70s for commercial and office-type uses. It was never rezoned, so it's considered a existing grandfathered use on the property. So as you see, the, the site to the south in orange is zoned office, same scenario. That one is a single-family home, but that's operated as an office and actually just remodeled within the last year or so, some pretty significant upgrades for that office. The site to the north is the Gateway Bank project that was built a couple of years ago, so there's just this small site left to redevelop. So the site is within the small area plan. It's this site right here. As you can see, it was suggested two to four stories. So this is the proposal itself. It would remove that existing about 3,100 square foot, single-family home used as an office and retail, and a new, actually smaller building, 2,375 square feet for retail and office. They would have 11 parking stalls on the site. Would be brick building, essentially. You may recall, they did go through the applicant's sketch plan review this past spring. The size of the building was significantly larger at that time. It was 10,000, 10,000 square feet. The idea was to utilize district parking, which we haven't built yet. So, and this is a look at that plan, so it was, you saw the front of it, but it extended all the way back near the rear lot line. The proposal before you this evening, the footprint, as you'll see in a minute, is about half this size. So based on the comments from the sketch plan review, they significantly reduced the size of the building, again, in response to the, the lack of that district parking, and added some green space and, and done some tweaks that way. Initially, they had wanted to do two entrance and exit points off of France Avenue. The county got back to us and said, "Nope, you're only going to get one." So they had to reconfigure the site, so it's as proposed this evening. So the request before the commission is a rezoning from that existing R1 to Plan Commercial District 1, which is the same zoning as the property to the north. So with that, there's a number of variances that are being asked for, namely a setback, setbacks for the building, the height of the building. You may recall, within this district, the height maximum is two stories and 24 feet. The comprehensive, or the, the small area plan contemplates two stories at 30 feet tall, but variances are needed. And also the parking lot itself, currently it's non-conforming with essentially zero setback. Some of those conditions would remain with this request. So in review of the site plan, I'm first start out with, we did have a traffic and parking study done by SPAC Consulting. Max Morland is here to answer any questions that you may have in that regard. But the conclusion is, the impact of traffic, well, there really wouldn't be any. This is actually a smaller building. It's about 800 square feet smaller, so in the reviewing a, a transportation study, less impact there. They also did, so no improvements are needed to the infrastructure. In regard to the parking, based on the uses, they're suggesting that 14 stalls might be needed on Saturdays. Again, there's 11 stalls proposed. As we heard from the applicant, you may recall, they, they live in the neighborhood and would likely walk to the, to the facility, and what they found for their retail business, that Saturdays haven't typically been a real busy day for them. The study also talks about the availability of on-street parking on the east side of the street, the Minneapolis side, there is on-street parking available there. And also with the 4500, the dry cleaner site, when that redevelops, district parking is available. As you recall, those 40 stalls within that project will be available to the district. So in, in regard to building height, the building would be 30 feet in height from the France side, which is the right side of the screen. There is an elevator, an elevator component to get employees up to the roof, so there was, would be a rooftop amenity, and that would be 39 feet. So that's what the variance is for, that 39-foot element. Again, the small area plan talked about the potential of four stories on this site. As you might note, so this is the France Avenue side, the site does slope down as you move to the back, so it does give the appearance of three stories on that backside. In regard to the parking back here, they are proposing a row of 22 arbivides planted to provide screening. There's residential properties to, so here's the site here, to the west. So there's an existing stand of trees that provides screening. The concern is more for the winter conditions, so that would provide screening of headlights into that neighborhood. In regard to our guiding principles, so again, this is a really small site, so there's not a lot of opportunities, but they are, they've developed the plan to be consistent with the property to the north. Note that this landscape area here would be an extension of the landscaping that was done for the bank, so that would come into this area here. The setback is relatively similar to the forward portion of the building. This, the, the rear of the building, this is about a 70-foot setback, so the proposed building would be in front of that but consistent with that forward portion of the building on the north. In regard to some of those principles that we talk about in the small area plan, one of them is bearing of utility lines. Now with that 4500 project, they will be bearing the utility lines all the way past the site, so they're, they're benefiting from that project. So those utility lines would be buried, would be buried. So primary issue is the proposed rezoning and development plan with those variances have reasonable for the site. Staff believes that the rezoning and the variances are, are appropriate here. The proposed use would fit into the neighborhood. Again, there's an existing, the, the rezoning would bring the site into compliance with the comprehensive plan to allow, to allow the retail and office buildings on the site, consistent with the PCD 1 district to the north. The building is relatively small in scale in the neighborhood, and again, the existing roadways would support the project. And I talked about the bearing of the utilities that would be taking place. The, in regards to the pedestrian friendly, so there's the sidewalk in the front, they would provide a pedestrian sidewalk connection to the front of the building with that storefront opening toward France, again, per some of the, the desired applications from the small area plan. In regard to the variance, we believe that the variances are justified in that the practical difficulty here is the extreme small size of the lot, the lack of depth to the property, and the narrow width, so we believe that the variances are justified in this case. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning and the site plan with the variances as listed, subject to the findings and conditions in your staff report. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Carrie. Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, Carrie, is it, there is an existing structure there now?
Single-family home, yep.
Single-family, okay.
Well, it was built as a single-family home, but it's been used as an office and retail space since the 70s.
Okay. Is it currently in use or, or is it operating?
Yeah, I'm not sure if those uses are active now. I know there are some signs in the windows. How active, I'm not sure.
Commissioner Hamilton?
I'm going to go someplace I don't, I shouldn't go, I don't want to go, but I'm going to go there anyway. It's a tiny little site, and we're not talking about a whole bunch of traffic here that, did we look at reducing that from a two-lane drive down to a one-lane drive down, adding one more spot in the back, reducing the amount of hard surface? And the last piece is, did we look at that exterior stair on the north side of the building? In the snow, it's not going to be nice.
We didn't, we didn't talk about having one way back and one way forward.
Does that, where would the city's position be on that, do you believe?
Yeah, I'd want to get comment from our city engineer. Drive, driveway configurations are subject to his review and approval.
Yes, indeed.
So typically, we look for the, a 24-foot width for two-way. He says 21 is acceptable. We didn't talk about that.
But-
Narrowing it even more.
Yeah, but there's only 11 cars down there. I mean-
Yeah, it's a good point.
Okay.
It might be a question for the applicant. Can they, could they live with a condition like that?
Gotcha.
Commissioner Bennett?
Let's just say these were both approved, being preliminary. What would the next step be in the process?
So with the rezoning, it's a two-step process, so you all will make a recommendation to the city council. The city council would then take action on the preliminary rezoning and the variances. They would still need to come back for final approval. That doesn't come back to the planning commission, that's just before the city council. Council might put conditions on something like explore the one-way option, and they could explore that, you could make that recommendation to the city council, and maybe that gets it addressed prior to them even acting on it on a preliminary basis. But it's a two-step, with the rezoning, it's a two-step process.
Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, I wasn't on the planning commission at the time when the Gateway Bank building was done, but I live in the neighborhood, and I went to a couple of meetings. My recollection was that the Gateway, the parking and the setback was an exception to what the city wanted in this area. Is that true? I mean-
We had a lot of discussion about whether we should bring the building to the front and have the parking in back. Part of what was different about that project is they had that underground parking behind the building that really, they met our parking regulations. I think there might have been a stall or two off. We did some proof of parking up front, but they almost were in compliance with the parking.
Right, but the whole setback thing was because they had the parking there?
Yeah.
Whatever, so that's, and what I'm going to say later on is, you know, in terms of the small area plan, you know, the, the way that's set up isn't necessarily a goal that the city wants to continue, right? I mean, that's, that was, that was an exception to how it would normally be done in the area.
Yeah, I think if we were dealing with a vacant site, we'd rather see the building up- up closer to the street.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Carrie?
I had one. So, you know, the 44th and France small area plan was, and we talked about this earlier tonight, actually, so it triggered my thinking, is, was kind of a two-tier program for building height. One was compliance with the ordinance, and the next one was, well, but you can go up to above the ordinance if there's a give-to-get. And the small area plan was very detailed in the kinds of things that could be give-to-get. Is the, you know, so I guess it's a two-part question. Is, just to confirm, this is, is this project going over the height of the zoning?
It's, it's really not in terms of, this is a two-story building from the street. It's 30 feet tall. That is the height that we've talked about for a two-story structure. Where you could argue that it goes above is that elevator shaft. We wouldn't really call that a story, but the height is still there. It's 39 feet. But we would, we would consider this a two-story building.
So, is it, so in other words, it isn't necessarily considered to be triggering anything that requires a variance from the zoning?
It doesn't trigger that big category of give-togets where we're really looking for, you know, dedication of public space. The site is so limited, just given the size, I'm not sure what they could really accomplish. The big one would be the bearing of the utility lines, and that's already being done for them.
Okay. Thanks, Carrie.
Any other, any further questions? Commissioner Lee?
Carrie, I noticed that in the applicant's submission, they answered the France Avenue working principles and supporting questions. Why didn't they answer 44th and France?
Yeah, I think that goes back to their sketch plan. It's really, it's the guiding principles that, that staff looked at.
Okay. And then you mentioned that 10 trees would be required, so would three additional trees be required, 'cause they're providing only seven?
Yeah, so they're providing the seven here, but we've included techni-arbivides as, you know, they may not be considered an over-story tree, but when there's the abundance like this, we felt that was, we've considered those over-story.
Okay, so you're considering that comparable. Okay, and you had noted in the staff report that the proposed parking is more in compliance with city code than the existing conditions on the site. Can you explain that more?
Yeah, certainly. Good question. I meant to touch on that. So, based on the square footage of the building that's there today, they need 20 parking stalls, and they've provided, there's 12 that exist on the site. So, the footprint is smaller, it's the 2,300 square feet. They need 15 stalls, and they're providing 11. So, they're short parked by eight stalls today. With this proposal, they'd be short parked four stalls.
Okay, and so you said that the footprint's actually getting smaller, is smaller than the existing that's there now?
Smaller than the sketch plan. That was my point there, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Since the current property is zoned R1, would you have lot coverage figures for that? I'm trying to get a sense of what's, we know for sure that the, the hard surface is going up, is being increased by this development, right, than, from, compared to current conditions?
Yeah, yeah. I believe that to be accurate.
We don't know by how much, though.
I don't know by how much.
Okay.
They would meet the R1 building coverage requirement, 'cause it's just the single-family home that we count. Again, that's on our to-do list, is to get that impervious surface.
Okay. And then, was this proposal reviewed at all for adherence to the building frontage guidelines in the 44th and France report or plan?
Yeah, in regard to the, the front door opening to the street?
Yes, the recommendations for different types of stoop, or this one, I think, was called doorway.
Right.
An F2 frontage model.
Right.
And do you feel that the city felt that that was in compliance, matched it?
Yeah, it's a big improvement over what's there. Right now, you have to walk through the parking lot essentially to get to the front door, thinking of it as a resident or a retail office use. It's really, it's a front door with a big parking lot in the front.
Okay. And when I looked at the 44th and France plan, it seemed to indicate that for this parcel, it did one, one sort of aerial where it showed this pulled up to the street. Would you interpret that as that was the desire for these, these hangover leftover R1 properties?
I think the desire of the plan was to combine those two lots and bring them up to the street. But given the fact that the significant investment in the properties to the north and south, that's not gonna happen for the short term, anyway.
Okay. And do you know the uses here? What, have you given, been given any indication? Did I hear retail, first floor?
Yep, retail on the first floor and, and office.
The upstairs.
The applicant will go into a little more detail on that.
Commissioner Miranda?
So, what's the cutoff for needing a traffic study? I mean, this seems so small, that a traffic study hardly seems to work around.
Yeah, we probably didn't need the traffic study, the parking for sure. But it's always good to, you know, SPAC has done a number of studies in the neighborhood with the project to the north. They did that as well, so probably not a whole lot went into that.
Okay. And then, you know, the way the city has a affordable housing fund, you know, has the city thought anything about doing a parking fund so that small lots like this could contribute to that rather than be paved over, you know, sort of thing? 'Cause it's, it seems like a travesty.
Yeah, I think it's one of those things, you know, we've got it on the council work plan to start to look at district parking up in this area, and that, that's one thing I think that we would need to, to consider.
Thank you.
Any, Commissioner Bennett?
Just to follow up on that last thing, do you have any idea of what the timeframe is on that, that work plan for the council for district parking in this area, when it's going to begin?
Yeah, it's in the economic development manager's work plan, obviously with the help of engineering and community development. So, it's on the work plan for next year.
Okay. Any further questions? Is it worthwhile to hear from the traffic consultant? You don't, doesn't have to happen.
I think just is, is, if, if questions come up.
Would anyone, okay, would anyone like to hear, or should we go to the applicant? Anyone wish to hear from traffic? We have a, yes, we want to hear from traffic. So, thank you.
Make us drink out here, we should definitely be heard. Yeah.
Commissioners, I'm Max Morland with SPAC Consulting. We did the traffic and parking study for this. Carrie pretty much said everything that was in the report, so I can just take questions if people have specific questions. Or I'll say something for real. So, as, as was mentioned, it's, it's a low traffic generator for the area. We anticipate less than 100 trips over the course of a day, five in the morning peak, 10 in the afternoon peak, which is a car every six minutes, so very low volumes. The roads and intersections around here can handle the traffic that's gonna be in this development. For parking, there's gonna be those 11 on-site. We forecast that typical weekday, those 11 spots can accommodate the parking demand that will be at the site. For a Saturday, based on the retail site, we anticipate, forecast that it could be up to a parking, peak period parking demand of 14 vehicles. So, if there's 11 stalls and there's 14 vehicles trying to park at the same time, that'd be three vehicles that wouldn't be able to fit there, they have to park somewhere else. France Avenue on the east side does have on-street parking for that one block right in front of the site between 45th and 46th Streets. There's room for 20 vehicles, so it's anticipated that these three extra vehicles could mix in there or park somewhere else within a block. There's parking on 45th, 46th, further on France. So, even though the demand might be a little bit higher than what's being provided here, we don't, it'll be very small, so we don't anticipate any issues with that.
Commissioner Miranda, do you have any questions?
Good idea. So, the, so these parking guidelines, they, they're considering both employees and, and customers, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, we did forecasts for the retail plus the office, kind of based on the square footage, which takes into account employees, customers. I guess that's everybody, yeah.
Right. Do the, does this consider like location, like whether it's on a transit line, or whether it's in a dense city or a suburb?
So, yeah, no, that's a good question. We didn't take any reductions for ped bike transit. These are just kind of based on a general suburban area for retail and office space. So, I know it was, it was mentioned that some of the people who work here might walk. That could be a reduction, that could be factored in. We, we just assumed, kind of based on national averages, most people are gonna be driving here.
You know, 'cause an issue, how do I wanna say this? You know, especially when you consider it's retail, and typically, I mean, it depends on the retail, of course, but, you know, in, in sort of, a lot of retail is, is not high-income sort of jobs, and people tend to frequently have, not have as many cars as people who work in, you know, high-income jobs that are in other parts of Adana, for example. So, I mean, is that, is that considered at all in terms of the parking for this, or?
I mean, I guess in some way. The way that we figure out these forecasts is that we do counts at other retailers, and we figure out how many cars are coming and going from those places, kind of correlate to, that to a cars per square footage, and then, based on the square footage of this development, we...
Okay.
Multiply that out. So, that, that is sort of factored in there, 'cause we're looking at other retail locations.
Okay. 'Cause I mean, it's just the, you know, neighbors complain a lot about a lot of things, but I've never heard anybody complain about, you know, parking or cars at this, this location. But, okay, thank you.
Any, any, Commissioner Hamilton?
I'm gonna ask you a little something about Kansas, because you know a lot about cars.
Sure.
But you heard our comments earlier about narrowing that driveway.
Yep.
And also, that's a fairly steep driveway, I think.
Yep.
And the number of cars that are back there, no matter what you do to the driveway, are hidden from the people that are in front, so they may know that there's parking back there, because there's a sign that tells them that, but that's all they know, and they know they disappeared down this driveway, perhaps never to return. But can, can you talk about those issues some, about what would happen in your belief as a professional, if you narrowed that driveway? If you added one more parking place down below? If you forced people into a fairly tight turn down below to come up one at a time?
Yeah, so narrowing the driveway isn't something that I would like to see, 'cause, you know, the volumes are gonna be low, as we discussed, but there is still the possibility that people are gonna be coming from both directions at the same time, and you don't, you don't wanna have someone have to back out towards France Avenue to let someone else through. That just kind of creates a bad situation when people are going in reverse, especially on kind of a steep grade there. And the benefit would be to get one more stall, which we don't think is really needed with a small amount of overflow parking demand being the potential issue. So, I wouldn't wanna go that way of narrowing it down to a one, one-lane, two-way situation.
Do you have any concerns about that slope?
The slope, it'll, it's something we kind of talked about in our office, that'll have to be well-maintained, obviously, throughout the winter. I think they'll find that out pretty fast if they can't get up and down it safely. I anticipate with, as with most retail locations, that the employees park in the back or off-site or somewhere less convenient, keeping those front spaces open for the quick in-and-out customers. So, I assume that must, much of the back parking will be from the office use and the retail use. They may even sign it that way, that front spaces are customer parking only. We send that out of the place. Other locations where the easy spots are for customers, the slightly more inconvenient spots are for the regular people who have to work there.
Thank you. Commissioner Burubi?
So, just out of curiosity, with 11 parking stalls, how many need to be handicapped?
Ah, whoa, I don't remember that off the top of my head. I think the one fit.
It's just one?
It's one.
Just one?
Yeah.
So, that's, maybe there's only two if there's no handicap person around. So, there's only two parking spots in the front, right? 'Cause it's gonna be empty unless someone's handicapped.
So, I think the accessible spot's gonna be in the back.
Oh.
I think it previously was gonna be in the front, then the latest plan, it got switched to the back.
I think it's gotta be the closest to the front entrance, so it might have to be in the front. That, our building official reviews that at the time of, of building permit, based on the handicap accessibility code.
Okay. I was just curious. It's not relevant, really.
But yes, that would be correct, if I was to guess.
Any further questions? Commissioner Miranda?
So, if the employees are typically parking in the back, is there really a problem with it being one, you know, being one lane? If, you know, they're not really gonna be interfering with each other, coming at different times, or coming frequently, or anything?
Well, I assume some of the parking will still be open for customer use, that there's not gonna be that many, I mean, it's a pretty small building, that many employees. So, I, I just would be wary of going down that path of creating a, the opportunity for head-on collisions on a steep grade when it's not necessary.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Well, for, I didn't, we know if we're gonna have this conversation, I think we all enjoyed Car Talk. Thank you.
Yep.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Commissioners, and thank you, Mr. T., the introduction. You took the window out. I don't really have much to add to the presentation, other than I'm happy to answer the questions, and I have a couple of clarifications just from that last exchange. The first would be the ADA access, and the reason we moved it to the back, this is the first-floor plan, and it's a, it's a walkout condition on the lower level. But just as was mentioned, the, the front stalls are going to be for the, for the quick in-and-outs at the, at the first-floor retail. The back stalls are for both the retail and the business on the, the second floor. And so, we felt that, that to provide the closest access for both the retail and the business occupants of the, of the building, since we do have elevator access all the way from the lower level, that that was an appropriate measure, so that the, if there was a full-time individual that needed ADA access as part of the business, they would have that closest spot to, to really the front door of the business at the back. The question about narrowing the, the lot, or excuse me, narrowing the drive, we originally had the building much closer to the, excuse me, we originally had the building closer to the south lot line and split that into two, two drive aisles. One to prevent kind of what we're showing here, which is a hammerhead term, but we actually resolved it, I think, quite well. The second is so that we could have the much-needed openings on the, the north side of the building from the property line. And the way that the building code is written, we're required to have, if we wanted to have any openings at all, for, from a retail perspective, glazing, we need to be a minimum of five feet from the property line. So, in the previous submittals, we were 12, 14 feet off of the property line because of the, because of the driveway down. But due to a request from planning and the concern from Hennepin County access, we did reduce it to one drive aisle access, but we still need to hold the building off of the north property line by five feet in order to be able to put any windows at all on that side, which is fairly important from the retail perspective, to be able to advertise the inside of the building to the guests to the north at the Anchor Bay. Excuse me. There are four active businesses currently in the, in the, the structure that exists on-site. And in fact, the, the owners that will be occupying this building, the new building, live in the neighborhood, so they will be walking to work each and every day. It's a, the owners are a proven retail establishment further north on France Avenue, and they have a fairly good sense of who will be coming and how often. With that, I'm actually happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Burubi?
Thank you for your presentation. Quick question regarding the roof. So, I understand there's, there's a deck that's accessible, employees, retail, I mean, that's...
Purely for the, purely for the employees.
Okay. So, there has been some conversation around the neighborhood that, that could get raucous? And what, how would you address that?
Well, I think from the, the fact that there are at most two, two employees at any given time on the, the... any given time on the, the retail floor, and a few potentially on the business floor, I would, and the fact that it's not going to be open, really, to anybody other than the owners of the building and their employees, I would say that's probably not going to be an issue.
Okay. Good answer. So, so it's only employees, and you would anticipate at, at the most, any given time, maybe five people? I mean, if everybody were up there?
I think that's a fair assumption, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Any other questions? Commissioner Miranda?
If the city didn't require parking at all on-site, what would you guys provide as parking? How many spaces do you think you need for customers and?
Well, I think the, we would certainly want to have parking up at, at the front. And the reason for that, and we went back and forth many times during the various iterations of this project, but also, the, it's really a specific request from the client, because they are, they have a lot of experience with the retail business further north, they have found that the majority of their customers, if there is not any parking on-site up-front, plainly visible, they simply drive by. And they could, they're able to demonstrate a financial, they've done an analysis of how many potential guests they lose, because they have people that say, "Well, I tried to stop by, but I couldn't find any parking. I don't want to deal with street parking. I didn't see any in front of your building, so I just went on by." So, I'd say that, you know, ideally, we would have more than the, the three up-front, but in reality, I think, it's precluded from the fact that we needed to provide most of the parking at the, at the rear of the site.
What if, in some alternative universe, the city banned parking on, on your property? What if you couldn't put in parking? Would you still build the building the way it is designed today, or?
Make sure I'm understanding the question correctly. If the city overnight said, "No parking at all," ever-
Right, you'd have to park in a, in, on the street or in shared parking?
I would, I would have to defer to the client.
Sure.
I don't want to put words in the client's mouth, but I think parking is, ease of parking, at least a few stalls up-front, is very important for the, the establish, or for the viability of the first-floor retail.
So, having-
It's a very senatorial answer.
So, I mean, it's really nice that you have, first of all, I like, I love the design of the building, and there's a lot of large windows, very sort of old-fashioned looking. So, you, there's no benefit to having that, like, right up along the street, so if, either pedestrians or cars driving by could see your wonderful merchandise or your service or whatever it is that you're-
I think if there was on-street parking, then I think bringing up closer to the, to the street, so that the, so that the merchandise was closer, would certainly be beneficial, but there is no on-street parking allowed on the side of France Avenue. And, so I think having those three spots is pretty important.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Lee?
What, what's the type of retail that you envision on the first floor? To give me some idea of the types of, you know, customers?
Sure. And if I could, if I could have the actual-
Doesn't have to be, you know, what are you hoping for?
Sure. I'm actually going to have the, the owner provide that, because I, I want to make sure it's the most accurate as possible, but it's, well-
Good evening, everyone. Casey Carl, resident at 4217 Lynn Avenue, and owner of the property, and one of two multi-decade retail veterans. So, we're going to have a lifestyle boutique. It'll be men's and women's apparel, home goods, accessories and gifts.
Okay. All right. Well, I think, I think what my co-commissioner here was getting at is, at least the language of this type of building layout tells me that it's more of a standalone office or something, that you have your own parking for. So, if I just am in the area, I may not think about actually going past it or into it. You can do a lot with signage, and obviously, what's in the windows. But, picture that up towards the street. I think that to see that driveway on the side would, would clearly still signal that there is parking, that I would go explore that, and you'll probably have a sign, parking in the rear, which is the situation for many of our older nodes. And what I like about the building is, it will be sort of an iconic building that will help establish what we're trying to bring back, I should say, to the 40, 44th and France area. I was surprised at the decrease in the size of the square footage. It's not, I don't think it's as big as the house we just looked at prior to your project. So, it's, it's 25 hundred square feet. It's like a house. So, to see it surrounded by all this parking, it seems to get lost. The balance of it seems a little off. I don't know if you're in a position to consider that, but I know that that would be the direction that the city would want to take, is eventually, all the, these houses, we don't know if it, the houses to the other side of it, or how far down, going down France, that may continue. But, in my mind, it's, it's a little bit of a shame that if, if we have to, because you're acknowledging what was decided by your other neighbor to the north, that now we have established this pattern. So, I guess that's, that's the reason, sort of, to push the designer a little bit, to say, maybe if you got a little more square footage on it, you know, if you were up around 5,000, you could come to the front. And if there was some leeway on the parking, depending on your use, I, I don't know how many of your employees you think are going to need to park in the back, that might be something worth a second look. So, that's, that's sort of where I'm coming at, by looking at this.
Thank you.
Any, any further questions for the applicant? Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, gentlemen. This is probably more, kind of a question for your, your engineer, but perhaps, I'm on page C4, it's the last one of the, and it's just the drainage plan. I'm, and I just was looking at the existing and proposed drainage map, and, so it looks like the existing, I mean, it's, it's all running to the rear of the property. Is there some pond or something off-property that's collecting water back there, or?
Currently, it simply runs it to the back. There's really no mitigation.
Well, then I notice, I mean, in your proposal, you've got holding tanks. Are they just, just collecting the water and discharging it right on-site there, or is there a runoff?
No, they collect the water, and then they allow it to discharge, there's a discharge outlet at, towards the northwest corner there that will discharge at a rate that's less than the existing discharge rate.
Okay, okay. But you're catching all that water, I mean, which, none of that was occurring.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bennett?
I think some of the other commissioners were touching on it, but, you know, obviously, what we saw a few months ago compared to now is quite a bit different, and certainly a lot of that's because of the direction you're provided by the city and us, just because of the shortage on parking. So, I think, kind of to, to what Commissioner Miranda mentioned, I mean, I just want to hear how much of that is dictating this change? Like, in, completely?
How much of the-
How much of the parking situation and what you're trying to accommodate is dictating exactly what you're doing here?
It was reverse calculus, essentially, to say, what do we think the appropriate number of parking stalls is on the site? What do we think we can gain support from planning staff and the planning commission? And we worked backwards from there, with the understanding that we needed to make a viable floor plate work for retail. We needed to support the entrance and egress of parking. So, there was a number of variables in play. The, the dominant one has been parking.
Okay. So, you know, for me, and, I mean, I'll say it later, too, but, you know, the message to the council, and, you know, this being on a work plan, you know, as these proposals are coming up, parking is dictating, you know, the future of this area. And we created this small-area plan, and again, the parking, district parking was the linchpin to achieving that vision. And if we don't address that soon, or right now, we're going to have incremental change that's not as good as it could be. And we saw the earlier proposal, that would have been a lot nicer arrangement and accommodate more people and more commerce. And now, we're, parking's dictating this change. And it's not as good as before, and not as good, I'm sure, as what they would have wanted, because they came to us with that originally. So, I'll say it again toward the end, but I just wanted to hear, again, like, how much parking is dictating this, because it feels like it is. And it feels like you're stuck with the parking situation, and we're just all trying to think creatively of how you can accommodate that without just saying, "Well, what if you didn't park anyone?" You know, what would you do? And obviously, you'd have other ideas, but you know that you have to. And is this, at least for this building size and what you're planning to do, is this kind of a minimum arrangement, or is this a minimum that you think could get approved arrangement? And is there a difference there?
I, I think if we could look at removing the, the four stalls adjacent to the building here at the back, that would give us another 20 feet of retail space. It'd be huge. But, knowing that that would, we're, we're playing with both the numerator and the denominator in that equation.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're increasing the size of the building and decreasing the amount of parking provided. So, we thought that that was kind of a non-starter, really.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm sorry, it is more of a question than a statement, but I, I do want to reiterate that, and I, I felt like we didn't maybe do a good enough job when we approved that small-area plan, to make that very clear, like, that is imperative to vet out now, otherwise, we're going to have this, where both for the community and the potential redeveloper, it's not an ideal situation.
Thanks. Any questions? We'll, we'll have more opportunity, opportunity for discussion and commentary should come later.
I have a question. I, I brought it up last time, because it's like crazy creative and too many logistics, but-
Jimmy, Jimmy, sorry. Is it a question about this proposal?
Yeah.
Or is it a question about how to create something else in the, okay?
It's a question about this proposal. So, the last time, as you know, there's that wall running along the north side of the property line, and some of it is the parking for that, the bank building. And I don't know if you talked to that owner about connecting into that for some parking or egress, or how undoable, or?
It's not a very feasible solution, in terms of their desire, what they put into it already, it's meeting their needs, what it requires for our, it was, like, because we discussed it the last, the last time we were here, so.
Yeah. So, I, I didn't, yeah, I didn't hear.
It was very creative.
And it really wouldn't add any parking spaces to what we're showing. It would simply provide an extra way out.
Yeah. And, and, and I guess if you, I mean, if you were to accommodate a larger facility to offset some costs and maybe could cover some parking, then it offers a way to merge those two. But again, you're stuck with your size because of the parking, so.
Well, and as, as discussed in the previous planning commission hearing on this, the, the property to the north was short parking. So, that, to ask then to say, "Can you absorb our four excess, or our four stalls?" I think would be a non-starter, because they're already underparked by a few stalls. That would be my understanding of that.
Okay. And then, my last question for you. One thing that I care about in particular to this site and the ones along France, is more of a buffer from the road between the sidewalk and the road. And we know that the project to the north, they were tight, and they committed to a narrow strip of, of vegetated thing that somehow happened when the building was built, and it went into service, that, that was just caved with concrete. And it looks like you guys are kind of matching that, but, I mean, my, my vote would be to move that sidewalk still more into your site and jog the sidewalk over for what we'd eventually want to do with the rest of France, and have more of a buffer. Because right now, it, that sidewalk is, I mean, it's like three feet off of France, and with no parking there, like you mentioned, that's, I mean, I'd rather encourage people walking to your site, and it's not a pleasant situation right now, so.
Do you have a question, Jimmy?
Well, I guess, why do you have it done the way you, you did? And could you accommodate more space there?
We really can't accommodate. I mean, we're down to, with the request to, to, or not the request, but really, the need to shield the headlights with the arborvitae at the back, that took up another two and a half feet of usable retail space. And so, we're down to, we were down to splitting hairs, really. We might have six inches left over to, to really accommodate both, you know, the, the clearance we need at the front door to swing out and provide a usable spot that's not going to be impinging upon a parked car. And, and we really, you know, don't want to, to sacrifice an additional parking space up-front in order to, to provide that. So, you know, could we move the building back any closer to the rear lot line? I don't really think we can unless we narrow the width of the drive aisle in the back, and I, I think our traffic engineer would agree that reducing that any further than what we've done would be ill-advised.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, just looking at the drive aisle, it does look like it could, I mean, it's narrower, but it's still, it's still, I don't know, it still could be tight, tighter, just with how few spots are back there. Just trying, trying to think on your behalf, and then, if, if handicap stall is required in the front, I mean, what, what would that do to this?
Well, it'd simply reduce the available spaces for drop-in retail to one, really. But again, we, we looked at it and said, "All right, that, that's, you know, that, that serves the drop-in, the occasional drop-in retail customer, but it does nothing to address the fact that we do have business occupants on-site, who would need equal access to that, to, to the elevator as well." And the fact that the, the business employees will not be parking up-front, again, that's why we said it's prudent to move it to the back, where the majority of the access for the site would occur.
Okay. I just, I know Kerry mentioned something about when it gets to the building official. I hate, when it gets to that point, you have to make the changes then. But if it does, then obviously, more sidewalk could be, I guess, accommodated.
Well, more sidewalk would not be able to be accommodated, because the ADA acts, the ADA site would be the same width as what we're providing, the eight and a half feet, and then we need an eight and a half-foot loading area to either side of it. So, it simply would take over two of the spots.
So, I'm just going to jump in.
It'd be an even swap.
I'm just going to, because I feel like we're having kind of a sketch plan discussion now, and instead of- I'd, I'd like to just, are these questions that we need to, we have a proposal, we have a project in front of us, and I think I'd like to see us ask questions at this point about, that will help us decide whether or not, that illicit facts will help us decide whether or not we approve or disapprove of this particular proposal. I, I don't think that we, it's fair to go down a path of, "What about another project?" So, if there's other questions about, you know, this particular project, I mean, these guys are really smart, and they're going to be able to answer any question we ask, but let's limit it to, so I just had one more, if nobody else does. Sue, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead?
For the owner, how many of those parking spaces do you feel will be used by, how many do you need for employees, or in your mind, you're designating for employees?
You know, with retail, typically, even during the busiest period, we'll have two, maybe for special events during the holidays, three employees on the sales floor, it's on the main floor, and then you're probably talking about a couple upstairs, two to three at the most. So, and that'd be it, you know, for rare occasions during the holiday season. And that's still not factoring in the fact that two of our employees live three blocks away and walk or bike every day. So, so it's not factoring that into the, removing those from the, so I'd say probably, like, at the most, four, and I think it's going to be far less than that. Based on our experience, and we're really talking about Saturday peak retail, actually, that wasn't peak for our businesses. Typically, that's actually during the work week, when it's usually parents, especially mothers, with kids that are in school. Those are the prime shopping hours. Once the kids are home from school and off to their activities, which especially are prevalent on the weekends, they're not shopping as much.
Do we have any further questions about, for the applicant about this? Thank you very much, and, you know, please sit down. You're going to, now we're going to discuss it. It's coming up soon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, and this is a public hearing. Any member of the audience can come and speak about this project if they like. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak? Thank you. Okay. All in favor, closing? All right. Now, it's free-for-all public, planning commission time. Would anyone like to say anything for- time. Would anyone like to say anything further? This would be a time to discuss. John, did you want to say some words?
I do. I—I like the project. I think it's going to be a very handsome building. I think it—remember what we're going from and what we're going toward. We've driven down that street 9,000 times, so you know what's there. This is a substantial plus. I think that they've done everything that they can do. Clearly, we've asked bizarre questions and they've had an answer to every one of them about how the logic worked out. I think it's as carefully thought out on a small site as it can be. And it certainly will have my vote.
Thank you, John. Any—any—any other commentary?
How many hours do I have?
Let me start by saying, on page 37 of the small area plan, it—on the very top
of the page, it says, "Small and constrained sites." And so, it's talking about sites just like this. And it talks about pedestrian scale, walkability, blah, blah, blah. And the last sentence in that paragraph is, "The newest development in the area," which I presume was the Gateway Bank, "has parking in front of businesses, which is functional, but changes the pedestrian character of the district." So, right in our small area plan, we're saying, "This is not what we want," right? So, I mean, not in terms of we don't want the business or-or whatever. The—the layout of the lot is not what we want. And I think, you know, our 1950s-era parking requirements have like—have basically ruined this project, in my opinion. I would not vote for this project the way it is. Because I—I just think, what we're trying to do, you know, what everybody on the small area plan wanted in that neighborhood was a walkable, you know, approachable businesses. And the Gateway Bank was an exception. And we—that was not the plan that we had for this area. And this should be something like the DIRR building, you know, the—whatever it used to be called, the Odd Fellows Club or whatever, you know, where, you know, it's built right to the street. I mean, we're talking about a building that's in the small area plan, not something just outside. If we're just outside it, I can see it being pushed back a little bit. But, you know, every picture that you see in the small area plan, there's no cars in front of, you know, parked in front of a building unless they're on the street, right? This is just like the opposite of what we want. So, I mean, I can go on and on. I have pages of bullet items. But, I mean, that's pretty much the sum of what I have to say.
Thank you. Any—any—Commissioner Berube?
So, Lou, I agree with you. And this would not be what we would hope for, given what we talked about in the small area plan. However, I must add that when this group came to us previously, we talked about this. And one of the issues is, the Gateway Bank is way back and has the parking lot in front, which is unfortunate, but it is what it is. It'll be decades before that changes. And on the other side of this building is a house that has been transformed to a business. And they've put in lots of money, so they're not going anywhere. And they also have parking in front. So, if we were to have or ask these people to put their building closer to the front, I think it would be just so—it's actually more cohesive now, even though it's not ideal, to have some landscaping, maybe a few parking spaces, somehow kind of mitigating the two on either side without totally standing out and being against the sidewalk. I agree with you that ideally, it would be. I think it would just look really odd because you'd have a building on either side way back with parking in front. Which isn't to say that two wrongs make the third the right, you know, whatever. But I—I think, given the circumstances, it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate that we—you know, you can't just take a blank sheet of paper and start over. That would be ideal. But, you know, you kind of have to work with what's already there. And I think—I think what's given what's already there, this is—this is—this is good. It isn't ideal if we were starting fresh, but we kind of had that discussion last time we were here—they were here and why it didn't really make sense for them to put it against the—the sidewalk. But I do—I do agree with your comments. I—I wish it were different, but I would—I would support this.
Thank you, Sheila. Any further comments? Jimmy?
Oh, you know me. Gosh, I have tons. I—you know, I'm stuck between Lou, the—what everyone else has said, you know, clearly what the—the development team has said and what are—what our parking requirements are forcing this project to become, which I feel like is stepping farther and farther away from what everyone wants this to be. And so, and looking at the history around the site, like, I—I would want this building closer. What isn't seen is this building is closer than what's previously there. It's a—I mean, it's maybe two, three parking spots closer. So, at least for retail, they do have better visibility. It's not right up to the street. But I'm—I'm also focused on the public realm of, how can we enhance that to drive more pedestrian and bicycle traffic here? And personally, I would be willing to even push that building back a little more and waive the four spots that they said would be ideal. Like, that—that's—I feel like where I would take my discretion here was—would be to underpark this site a little bit more to have a much more gracious public realm in front of this building. Wider sidewalks with more of a buffer and more of a place for people that are walking and biking to come up to it. Because that's essentially what we're trying to create as part of the vision. And it's like, if it's going to be one thing or another, I don't know what it'd be. But that's just where I'm stuck. And that's what I would do since, you know, they're okay with it. And what we're trying to drive in this eventually is district parking. And if they're going to be in this building for a while, let's say, five, 10 years minimum, maybe it's shorter. But I sure hope that the district parking is figured out by then so that if the use changes and more people are needed to park there, we have district parking. So, I—I feel strongly that I'd—I'd take the gamble to push this building back, to take out parking spots or narrow the width of the driveway and just to have a much better sidewalk and pedestrian experience and more buffer from the street. So, that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Miranda?
So, there—there is a building just outside of Adina in St. Louis Park on Excelsior Boulevard and 36th and a half Street, I think it is, where it's a cluster of four retail buildings with a very narrow one-lane driveway and probably 20 parking spots in back. So, it's not on a hill, I'll grant you that. But it is—and it's, you know, a building probably built in the 50s, I would guess, or something. So, presumably, it's been there for a long time and they've—they've somehow dealt with that—that issue. So, I don't think it's something that—you know, when you talk about, you know, engineers driving decisions as opposed to—no offense to engineers.
[laughing]
Engineers of—you know, driving decisions instead of, you know, people driving decisions, then, you know, you get highways with fast cars and you don't get walkable, nice neighborhoods, right? So, I think what we're trying to do is move away from the perfect car-oriented driveway and something that may make it more difficult for cars. Certainly, it will. But it allows it to be a more pedestrian, you know, environment. So, just a second. So, the thing is, if you—if you continue to build things to make it easy to drive and park, people will continue to drive and park. And what kills me about the—the Gateway Bank is that—I mean, I bank there, so I like—you know, again, I like the—I like the—the businesses there. But, you know, if I knew that making that exception would then drive the same sort of suburban-oriented development down the rest of the street, I'd make—I would have made a much bigger stink about it. So, I think we need to—we actually literally need to say, "It doesn't matter what's on either side." And we need to say, you know, "This is what we're driving for. Maybe it'll drive"—the Gateway Bank isn't going to change, obviously. But, you know, maybe in five or 10 years, things will change on either side of it rather than 50 years, you know? I mean, it's just the sort of thing that when you make things easy and convenient for whatever, that's the method people are going to use. And as we make it easier for cars, then people are going to drive. And we're—we're not going to change anything. Thanks.
Any—anything further? So, do you—Sue, do you—thought you were leaning towards the microphone. So, I—I—I really like this proposal. I mean, I think based on the feedback that the applicants were given in previous meetings and based on the space they had, I think they did a nice job of trying to balance everything. I completely agree with Jimmy about district parking. I mean, I think that's really an important thing to get going on. And obviously, the small—the 44th and France Small Area Plan was just done a few months ago. Nothing could have been done by now. And so, I think based on existing conditions and based on feedback this applicant received, I think they did a really nice job. And I think it's going to be an asset to the neighborhood. May not be perfect in every way, but, you know, nothing is. And this is—this is nice. My personal—get into personal little things—is, uh, I'm—I'm glad that they're not—that they're—the idea of parking on France Avenue hasn't come back because I think that that would really be harmful to bike traffic. And I—so—and—and if we put parking on France Avenue, then everyone's going to go through Country Club. And the Country Club people are already unhappy about cut-throughs there. So, anything—any parking we do on France Avenue is just going to drive cars and bikes onto—through Country Club. And then, we're going to have a second issue. I'm glad that didn't happen. That's kind of my thing. But I thought—I thought particularly Sheila and Jimmy, I thought your comments about this being more cohesive and mitigate the two on the other side and work with what's already there really well. And it's what our parking requirements are forcing this project to become. I—I—I'm totally with you. But I—I would support it. I think it's a really nice project and I think people are going to really enjoy having it. So, any—any other comments?
I would make a motion and we can discuss it after that.
The what?
I would make a motion to approve and we can discuss it after that.
Okay. One motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion—any further discussion? We have a motion to approve, sub to the staff memo?
Yes.
Yeah. A motion and a second. Any further commentary?
I think it's unfortunate that the world isn't a perfect place.
[laughing]
But it's not. And we've caught it in mid-stride and we wished we hadn't, but we did.
The main level of your house is kind of, but it took you a while even there.
Yeah.
It's pretty close, though. Any—any further commentary? Jimmy?
Yeah. I just want to say, I—I can't approve this as is. And it's—because I would—I would put the amendment in there to go short another four stalls in parking. Just—just knowing that that would work for your business and for users, but accommodate a—a better public realm on the front of France, I feel, is very important, much more than even bringing the building closer of making that a more pleasant experience. I mean, I don't know how many people walk up and down that sidewalk, but you go south of that area, it's—people aren't walking there because it's a problem. So, I'm not—I'm not—I—I won't vote to approve this, not because I don't believe in this project. I—I love everything about this, but I want something better for you and the community. And I would be willing to make more of a sacrifice on the parking end, so...
What if you make amendment to—or make—make a motion to approve with an amendment that—it's what you just said about less parking and more landscape and sidewalk?
I mean, I would do such a thing. So, I mean, I—I would motion to—to have an amendment in there to—to scoot the building back a little bit, eat up those parking spots to accommodate a—a better public realm. But again, that incorporates a lot more work on their end and some design, so I don't know how that would go. But I don't know if that's something that's acceptable to you and—or not. But—and maybe Kerry can provide some guidance.
Well, you're designing on the—
Yeah.
You could table it and ask them to redesign that and come back and show it to you.
The downside to that is city council has to see this after this. And they deserve a position that one can suggest where they will be.
Yeah, that's another option is recommend that they make those changes and present them to the city council for consideration.
That sounds nice.
Yes.
I'll have that. I don't know. I mean...
You'd have to ask for the motion to be amended to do that. And you'd have to have it approved or reject the motion that's ahead of you and propose a new one, either one.
No, I—I would vote to go—
Are you—are you making a—are you asking for a friendly amendment or are you going to move an amendment?
Friendly amendment.
Okay. Do you accept that, John? To reduce the parking by four, move the building back and add more public realm?
I understand the argument. Um, I—I—no, I don't think so. I think—I think the effort has been made by the proposer, by city staff, to say, "This is the compromise that they believe is most acceptable across the board." I believe it is where it needs to be based on the forces that are there. I'm guessing that to be true, so I'm going to say no.
Could I make a friendly amendment?
Well, hold on. Not—not quite yet. Not quite yet, but I'll come back to you in a sec. Jimmy, would you like to make a formal proposal to an amendment? Because then, what would happen is if somebody seconds it, we can discuss your amendment and vote that up or down. And then, we would come back to John's motion, sub to Sheila's commentary. So, you can now make a formal amendment and we would vote on that at, you know, scooting the back and move—if you got a second. Or you can just kind of—
I will.
You made your piece and council can hear it.
While he's speaking.
Yeah. Please make a comment.
I—I really appreciate having everyone's viewpoints. I think Commissioner Berube, that was very interesting for me to think of it that way. I hadn't quite considered it. And I appreciate Commissioner Miranda's comments as well. I think, in some respects, we have a plan. And I think those plans are, as one resident said before, a covenant with the city about how we're going to approach development. And I think in—in some ways, we're—we're straying a bit by trying to design on the dais here. It isn't about any individual proposal being good because we like it or—or we think they did a great job. It's—it's—we have a plan for once. And this is part of the study areas. So, it was pretty clear what—what—the goals were there. And I don't feel that this matches the goals. If there's one disagreement I have with the staff report, it's that. They respond to the guiding principles of France and—I don't know, France something. Somehow, they got the other guiding principles. But I really would have liked them to respond to the 44th and France and say, "How does that match it?" Which I believe it doesn't. So...
Sue, sorry. Is this—is this related to Jimmy's amendment or is this just kind of your—
Yeah. Yeah, no. So, if—I—I—I see the logic of the amendment, but I would be prevented from supporting it. Because, again, I think that we have a plan. And to try and make an amendment outside that of what the plan recommends, it would be difficult for me to support.
Okay. So, Jimmy, do you wish to make a formal proposal to amend? Or are you—are you willing to just—you understand this. The council's now heard your argument, you know, and your—you know, your reasoning. Are you good with that? Or do you want to make an amendment and see if someone seconds it and have that voted on?
Just thinking of time and if that is something acceptable that, you know, other people would—would respond to. I mean, if—even if they had the alternative of both. I—I—yes, I'll make the—the formal.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second to Jimmy's amendment?
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you. Sheila, you wanted to suggest something.
Yes. Okay, I want to make a friendly amendment. Before I do that, though, I just want everybody to realize the situation we're putting the applicant in. Because, on the one hand, when they came to us, at some point in the conversation, we talked about it—it needs to be further back. So, it could be more in line with the other buildings. So, they have done what we have asked. And now, they're back to us and we're saying, "Oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute. We want it closer to the front." it closer to the front now. So, come back again. I don't think that's good practice. I think it is not ideal. It isn't completely what we might have envisioned in our small area plan, but it is more cohesive with what's there, and it's quite attractive, certainly more attractive than what's currently there, and cohesive with the other buildings. There could be improvements with the pedestrian realm. There could probably be improvements with the connectivity. But I think overall, it fits in quite well with the small area plan. Aside from ideally we'd be on the street, we already told them we don't want it on the street, and that's why they're back here. So, my friendly amendment is, we approve it as written in the staff memo with strong message to city council that we want them to really make a priority out of that community parking, because the comments about this whole thing, the whole building is jiggered around, how are you going to park cars? And cars are driving the design. So, even though they've done a fine job, if we didn't have to worry about cars, it could have been better. If the applicant wants to move forward and doesn't want to wait for the community parking, that's their choice, but we need to get city council moving on the community parking, because as Jimmy mentioned before, every incremental decision is eating away at the opportunity to have a really beautiful small area. So, this is what we have in front of us now. I propose a friendly amendment that we allow the applicant to go forward. They've done what we've asked them to do. We need to approve it, go forward to the city council with a strong message that we need the consolidated parking and that they should consider taking out parking in the front of this building and adding a nicer pedestrian realm. That way, the applicant can go forward, city council gets the message, and we can all go home.
Are you suggesting a two-part friendly amendment? One, to strongly encourage haste on community parking, and second, for the city council to consider allowing applicant to remove the front parking and replace it with more public realm?
Yep.
Okay.
And otherwise, we approve it as written.
You accept that? Jerry? Okay. Jimmy, do you have further commentary?
Yeah, and at least with what I was saying, I didn't mean to remove all parking from in front of the building. It was just to keep it, but just push it back, so.
Okay, we're, I, thank you. Give one second, though, and I want to talk to, I think we're kind of really kind of pushing our deliberations here. Carrie, the applicant would like to speak. Do you see any, I'm good with that. Okay.
Protocol, but I just wanted to... So, a couple of things. I think, first of all, in terms of parking in front of the building, the building won't work for retail without parking in front of the building. We, I think, litigated the street parking on France the last time we were here. We heard very clear the position on that. We know that's not an option. We didn't pursue it again, but we need to have parking in the front for retail. It is a given based on the impulsive nature of retail, and if there's not spots there, they will just keep driving down France, as we've unfortunately learned the hard way with building on France before, so, with retail on France. So, that's the first thing. And then, in terms of the location of the building and proximity to the street, I would say yes. Thank you for bringing that up. We were asked to, I think, find the happy medium between the small area plan, of which my wife and I were intimately involved in shaping and agree with it in terms of the direction and aesthetic of it, and the reality of where the buildings are adjacent to us in the north and the south properties, and the likelihood of them being redeveloped anytime soon, or moved closer to the street anytime soon. So, we think it's probably location-wise, in terms of proximity to France, the happy medium between those, I think. And that's, so, I just want to make those things just kind of clear. And then, obviously, the other part that was a huge part of our decision was the parking conversation the last time we were here. And that is how we got to this. And it was truly the math behind the parking, what the building needs are, but more importantly, what the requirements are from the city, so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. So, as I understand, she was friendly amendment, just to consider the applicant's commentary. It's to encourage haste on public park, community parking, and to allow the applicant to move the building closer if the city council, for the city council to...
I would say what you said first, and then approve it as-is if the applicant chooses to address a warmer pedestrian realm for the city council.
Okay. I, I'm going to interpret, I think that, this would just be your choice then what to do. You could stay how you are if you wish. Okay. Are you good with it?
Sure.
Is there any further discussion? Lou, do you have something?
So, Edina is, the vast majority of Edina is single-family homes. And we have five of these small areas, five tiny little zones in our entire city, well, outside of Southdale, of course, it's a huge outlier, but five tiny areas that form the centers of each of our neighborhoods, right? And this is where we want density, and you need density to have alternate forms of travel other than cars, okay? So, this small area is literally two blocks tall by one block wide, okay? So, when you say things like, you know, the property's next to it, you know, or set back further or whatever, you know, it's like, we don't have a lot of room to work with. We only have a dozen lots or whatever. It's tiny. You know, if we keep going down this path, then, you know, you could look at it the same way at Sunnyside and say, well, you know, there's three buildings there that are very small with huge parking lots in the back. Well, that's the way it should stay, but that's, I don't think what we want. This building is 25% smaller than the single-family home that it's replacing. I'm just in shock that we think this is a good land use. I just, it doesn't make sense in any way. I mean, it's nothing against the business or anything, it's just, it's all about parking, and we have destroyed and ignored everything else that we talked about on this commission and in the city.
Thank you. Are there any further comments? So, we have a motion, so I think we're going to move to voting. We have a motion to approve as set forth in the staff memo with a strong encouragement to city council to really, really go at the community parking quickly and to allow the applicant to remove the front parking if it chooses and the city council approves. Is that correct?
That's where we are.
Is that where we are? Ms. Olson, could you, could we do a roll vote, please? Anyway, we're sorry. An aye is to vote in favor of that motion, and a nay is to vote against approval of the, this proposal. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Miranda?
Nay.
Commissioner Lee?
Nay.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Nay.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov?
Aye. So, I think that's four ayes and three nays? Yes.
I believe so.
Carrie did that on his fingers.
I haven't even wrote it down.
Thank you. So, the motion passed. Thank you. And so, this will go to the council when?
December 4th.
December 4th. Thank you to the, I wish to thank the applicant for just a very good job, and thank you for helping us reach this conclusion, and good luck with the council. So, well, thank you. Well, that was, that was quite a deliberation, everyone. So, now we come to community comment. And for everyone, community comment is when people in the audience who are filing out for our friends on TV can come and speak about a matter that's not otherwise here. Would anyone like to speak? Move to close community comment?
Second.
Motion, all in favor of closing community comment?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we come to correspondence and petitions. Do we have any? No. Okay. Moving on to chair and member comments. Do any members have comments about other matters, obviously? I mean... Lou?
Sure, I always have comments. Last week, the city had its fourth annual Edina Urban Symposium, and I attended, as did other members here. And I found it a very enlightening experience. I thought it was really good. I loved, this is the third one I've attended, and I think the city does a great job with it. And it was a great learning experience because there were, I don't know, maybe 10 tables of about eight people each, and basically, you had to come up with a scenario. You were given a five-acre piece of land, and you had to come up with the way of balancing developer needs versus city needs and whatnot. And every table came up with a slightly different answer. I mean, some were significantly different. So, I think it was really interesting to show that there's really no one right answer to urban planning or to how cities decide things, and two people will come with different Another thing is transportation, a lot of changes happening. So, Tesla reported its first actual profit, so electric cars are a thing now. BMW reported they're having a new priority on electric vehicles. Tesla's market cap exceeded that of BMW's. This is a startup in America. Ford Motor Company bought an e-scooter startup. So, you know, things are changing right in front of us. So, you know, we need to pay attention to these things, so. Another thing that's clearly in the news is the wildfires in California, and that's relevant because of land use. You know, I think we need to think about, well, they need to think about their land use, but, you know, we need to think about how our land use affects the worldwide environment and how the IPCC report from the UN, you know, with the change in global climate, or climate, or global temperature, rather, you know, we're putting ourselves in a really bad way, whether it's, you know, 100-year floods or whatever. So, I think, you know, what we do as a commission is super important, and I'm glad to be on here and I'm glad to work with you guys, because I think we're, we all want Edina to be a leader. Thank you.
Thanks, yeah. I think, I think all of us are really focused on sustainability-type issues, and that's coming up in the comprehensive plan. Are there other comments, chair, member comments? As chair, I don't have anything. So, should we move along to staff comments?
Just a reminder of the Southdale open house for the Southdale plan is next Monday, the 19th, at Public Works, from 6:30 to 8:30.
Very good reminder. Jimmy?
Carrie, as we're watching the Caribou Development Approach completion, or what, you know, I mean, it'll happen by spring. What is the timeframe for the improvement of that intersection? As we know, that was kind of part of, you know, some of the approval on the council end, and obviously, that nearby bridge, and I'm just, I'm just wondering, just so we can be kind of enlightened by the sequence of some of the decisions.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head. I would have to check in with engineering and how that's being coordinated with the county, because, yeah, that was the intent, was for those improvements to happen with this project.
Good question. Any other questions or comments, we got any staff? Because otherwise, that leads us to our final item on the agenda adjournment. Any, any second? Motion, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone, for a lot of work, good work tonight.